This conference will now be recorded.
I thought you were like, like, county could have been here or something, but you were elected to be here and answer these questions.
Betty.
From certain.
Betty's here too, so help her.
Oh, well, y'all can discuss it, but yeah, discuss it and y'all.
Dear Roberts.
Here.
Mr. DeMio.
Here.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Mr. Bow.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt. Here.
Good.
Would you leave us an invitation?
Yes, we please pray with me. Dear Father, thank you for the weather that's on the way. Please help us get lots of moisture out of it. Keep everyone safe in their travels and work and everything while it's going on. And please help us make good decisions on the things that we do and be here with us tonight as we perform what you said. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I would declare that you lead the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ. Salute the flag, the state of America, the legal and the principle of our great citizens among the united cultures.
May be seen.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to adjourn with a couple of changes? First being moving the closed session, city manager evaluation to non-action and just make that the city manager evaluation for discussion. And then also, under direction of the attorney, change resolution 2023-012. Change it from approval of memorandum of understanding to approval of memorandum of ground lease for style solar project.
Okay, motion in second. Shannon, did you get all of that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Wyatt. Yes. Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Mr. DeMio.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Dear Roberts.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion for considerations of the minutes of January 9, 2023?
I have a motion in second on consideration of minutes and discussion correction. You think it's good? Okay. All right. Same in discussion. Shannon?
Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt. Mr. DeMio.
Yes. Yes. All right. Bring this to our questions desk report. Shannon, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Well, we're still working on end of year reporting and in the quarter reporting is not getting thrown by. So that's what I'm doing mostly. Is that all?
I know that I should know, but how are we coming on the roof for the senior set?
They're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think most fees about, I think it should be through me by the end of the month if some weather and not too much sun. But they're working on it.
Mr. Wyatt, any other questions? All right.
Not at this time. I'll be doing my financial report later on.
Yes, Minister.
There's also some regards to the city manager. It's just something to think about. Our financial workshop is coming up here for a quick. On the cost of living wages, depending on where we're at and what we decide, can you also put into factors that we did? Other than cost of living wages, if we went to 100% insurance, set it from 90 to 100% paying their insurance plus COVID allowance in June and July. Now, twice, twice for that year. And what I'm, what I'm getting at is that what concerns me is one, every time we raise the cost of living for employees, the insurance goes up. So the employees don't get nothing. So I was just thinking about how can we cover more money in the pockets of our employees? And that was just something I've just thought. So just a thought for the commissioners, what as you guys, maybe we can put some more thought into it. But I just know from history, every time we do a cost of living raise, insurance goes up and you guys don't. So just something, my way of going a different direction, outside the bounds of that. Money policy. And for us, it's non-recurring. So for the city, it's easier to budget something like that because we're in all our interest rates because what we plan to give the employees for COVID allowance. And it doesn't pass up and down because of overtime. So something to think about.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
City manager, while we're just talking about this, I don't want to forget when we get over here, but have we determined a venue for this meeting?
We did go back and forth. We tried different places and it just, we're gonna have to have it here.
Okay.
We looked at the hospital, there was an issue with masks.
Okay, and I have a clarification.
Okay.
Because I had heard that. But since you are in the parking lot, because it's at the annex, no mask would be required for entry. And once you're in the annex, it's excluded. It's the hospital proper only that you're required to have a mask. So that was from one of the, one of the financial officers. And they said you shouldn't, you shouldn't have any problem at all, but.
Okay, then that's something to look at.
Just wanted to bring that back to, if they haven't filled that slot, so.
Okay, I will definitely look back, yeah, look into it tomorrow. Do what you do.
I think what the mayor's getting at is that annex is in the parking lot. It's, it's separated.
From the law.
Annex over here on the south, so in round two or secondary from the.
It's effectively the same as walking into wellness center and you're not required to. Okay, but anyway, something to, to follow. All right. If we had changed it, then. I don't know what we, I don't know. Then I don't know.
I will definitely look into it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Mr. City Manager, our new school resource officer, Robert Still, will be taking part in Career Day at Taylor Middle School this Thursday. As we look to plan to see early in our local youth about a future of law enforcement. For those who didn't see the newspaper over the weekend, the Lee County Drug Task Force, in which the Longington Police Department has a full-time agent. Seized $75,000 worth of fentanyl pills, guns, and cash across the street from the Hobbs High School on Friday. Our officers come in to contact the fentanyl on a weekly, if not daily basis here in town, and it continues to be a huge problem for us. Finally, I have asked law enforcement officer Massey to be present tonight as there is one item left for discussion involving commercial, the street parking regulations. And an action item involving a possible cannabis business on Main Street. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Mr. Wyatt. Father, what is a, a single pill of fentanyl across the street?
$10 to $20.
Okay.
Ingest it, smoke it, or squirt it. And.
The amount of.
Fentanyl barriers. So you really never know what you're getting. So we Narcan people on a weekly basis and the addicts carry around Narcan. Yeah, that's bad stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Sergeant. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner. So all four of our new hires have finally started. Our last one started today. He, of course, had to give us two weeks of us, so he was starting to start till today. We still have one position open. We had a testing this weekend, but only one person showed up and he failed the test, but he said he wants to try again. So we're gonna have a new testing site, a new testing come up soon. We haven't scheduled yet, but we're gonna schedule it pretty soon and invite that. However, right now on shift, we still only have eight EMTs. We do have four people in basic class, but they won't finish till the end of May. So they, as soon as they become certified, EMTs would be probably mid to late June. That's, that's our biggest problem right now is EMTs. If we can get somebody that has EMT, if anybody knows anyone with EMT license too much. Part-time, full-time, I'm always in my parts. Right now, preferably full-time, but. So in December, EMS billing brought in $83,360 plus cents, which gives total for 2,022, $918,865.36. So we're doing pretty good right at that 2995. This time of the summer. Stand for any questions?
Mr. Wyatt? Everybody's having a great of a move. Mr. Bow.
Yes, I'd like to serve law enforcement, Lee County Drug Task Force. I'd like to, thank you very much. So that really needs to be removed from our streets. Move it out there and everything.
And I would add that they just don't operate in Hobbs. They've been doing a lot of operations up here locally, search forms, kicking in doors, making arrests. They're looking after us as well.
Yeah, everybody involved, just wanted to congratulate.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate.
We talked with the city manager and understand that the county was looking to allocate some funding coming possibly to Longington. I just wanted to say thank you to the county. Let the county know that we're grateful very much. And thank everybody for being here again, help local, eat local, get out there and take care of our businesses. Take care of the people who live in the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wyatt?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt. Mr. Dandy.
Whatever was mine to do.
Daily?
No, well, I will release the time and we'll have the financial meet at 8:00 AM on Monday, but we'll release the venue description, I guess, tomorrow morning. Follow your guys' stuff. I'll send in an email, they'll check them. And then I did send out details for the municipal day on February 15th, if you guys come to the school here today. Yes.
You got more facts? Go on. You got more?
Oh, yeah, about a block and a halfway. Next time I bring more runs.
My mouth's in it.
Gone. Yeah. Look at him. Like, okay, you can chill out.
Danny.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, I have a couple of items that I want to present tonight. I'll just hold them on. The first one is the splash pad. I know last year we tried to get that pad up and running, we were not successful. This year, we're working with a company, they are called Creative Recreation Designs out of Albuquerque. And they will be here on March the 13th and 14th to look at the splash pad and to do a analysis and see what we need to do to get that up and running. And so again, that will be on the 13th and 14th. Hopefully, we will be successful this time. It's a coming out of Albuquerque. Now, they're going to just look at it. Last year, the problem we ran into were specific parts. We didn't have the parts needed. It's an old system. I, I was working with the city manager of Hobbs and they actually came, he sent it through to look at it. And it's just an old system. So hopefully, we will be successful with this question. But after the meeting on March 13th and 14th, I will give you an update where we're at with the thing moving forward. Okay? Playground proposal. I've been working with Jason and we put together a proposal. Our goal here is to replace our playgrounds at Hobbs. There's some of them, some of our playgrounds are just old and they need replacing. So I'm just gonna pass along this proposal. This is a proposal that we are going to submit to the Maddox Foundation. And it's a total amount, we're looking about approximately $745,000 to replace our playgrounds at all five parks. So that'll be submitted to the Maddox Foundation and I'm very optimistic that they will help us with this. Hopefully, they'll fit it, at least half, and we'll go from there. Capital Outlay. We had two capital outlay projects that are what the state is considering in the red category. The first one was the 807, approximately $807,000 for the main water project. And the other one was the 300, approximately 352,000 for our water wells. Now, we are moving forward on those, both of those projects. I'm working with Mr. Hubert Pitano with the COG. And he will be presenting to ALFC this week. And I did let him know that I'm available if ALFC has any questions or concerns. But I feel very optimistic that once they see that we are moving forward on those projects, that they will be removed from the portfolio. So I'll keep you posted on both of those projects. Our five capital outlay projects are moving forward. I, I will contact our COG tomorrow. And I just want to make sure that all our projects are submitted to our delegation and we'll just move forward from there and see what happens. Any questions on capital? DOT grants. We received a letter from Department of Transportation. We're going to apply for the TPF project again, the Transportation Project Fund. I did meet with Crystal and we will also apply for the MAP grant. So this one, the grants are due publicly in May, correct?
The MAP grants are due in March. The TPF grants will be due in May.
So we will apply for additional funding for DOT? I've been working with Mr. David Royball. He's a local engineer. We have a $70,000 grant to plan and design a water tower. So he will put that proposal together for us. And then from there, we're going to request from the governor's office $3.5 million for our water tower. Now, the original plan is to build a water tower by Station 2. So hopefully, through the governor's office, we can receive some funding and we'll go from there. But we do have that $70,000 and I will bring that proposal to the commission, hopefully by the end of, beginning of February. Baseball softball fields. We submitted an RFP for lighting and we did not receive any bids. And so we decided to go the CES route. We have $100,000 from the Maddox Foundation. We have $150,000 from the county. And we just found out that we have $100,000 from Lee County Electric Company. So we have a total of two, about $350,000 or light. We have to hire what they call a lighting engineer. So that's, that's the obstacle we're running into. We've gotta hire an engineer to look at the system. Our goal is to replace all lighting with LED. And so once we, we did identify an engineer, he's gonna look at it. And once we have that proposal, then we're gonna move forward. And hopefully, have new lighting on May 1st, once the baseball season starts. Any questions with that?
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
If you decided, I mean, you decided to go with the CES route, have you contacted any of those companies and see if they have a lighting engineer on their staff?
Right, so Jamie got, she, she got on the CES website and there is a company out of Hobbs. Right, so they recommended engineer and so that'll be our first step. Once we get that engineer, we'll move forward. I'm also working with David Royball on a water pressure model, distribution system analysis. And what they're going to do is they're gonna look at our entire water system in the city and find out where are our weak points, where are our strengths? Especially with the hospital. I know sometimes we've had some issues in the past. We've talked about how we need a water tower out there. So I did speak with him. I was really excited about this project because they will do a complete analysis of our water system to identify, do we have, what are our major leaks? Where, where do we need additional towers and so forth? So hopefully, we can get that analysis soon and I will bring that to the commission. That'll help us for any future water projects. Broadback. We went through, see, we went through the RFP, LICO. We did issue a check to LICO, $193,000. So they will start that project very soon. Once they're complete with the project, then we'll pay them out additional $193,000. So hopefully, that'll happen very soon. We're looking at broadband in District 5 and District 1. And that is Phase 1. And once Phase 1 is complete, then we want to move forward into Phase 2. Veterans Memorial. We get hired an architect. The problem we're running into right now is the architect believes that the property is too big for the veterans memorial. And so we're gonna meet with the Veterans Committee again and we need to make a decision. We're gonna have to either split the property. We just need to decide what we're going to do. The architect's tower is too big. And it'll be very difficult once we build the veterans memorial or, or staff to maintain it. I didn't realize how big that property is, but it is big. And so we're, hopefully by February, we will meet with the committee and a decision will be made and we'll bring that to commission and move forward. The marquee of the theater, company out of Albuquerque, correct?
Correct.
They will be here to do analysis of the marquee.
Yeah.
Now, the, the plan is to actually take the marquee off, correct?
Yes, but not this next week, right? Next week, they will just be coming down to do their, what they call their survey of the exact where it's located on the building. They'll do all their measurements. They're gonna measure all the existing neon, where it goes, what is. Look inside the marquee itself and see what kind of relays and things like that. Then we're looking to see if the arrows used to flash downward there in the very front of the marquee. They said there should be some sensors in there that they'll be able to tell that once they get in and start looking at it. So that should be happening.
And then the last thing I have to report, I did speak to David Reed today and they plan, they will fund a bright light. So that's exciting news. And so I'll meet with him very soon and see how much that will be. And we will advertise it as a shoot and we'll forward it. Hopefully, by the end of February, we'll have a bright, bright light onboard.
So that's actually from the Lick.
That's crazy. That's crazy, yes.
David Donman.
David, yes. And so, so in summary, against splash pad, playground proposal, capital outlet, capital outlet, LSC, DOT grants, we will provide again, $70,000 for our planning and design of a water tower. $3.5 million for a water tower. Our baseball softball field, distribution system analysis, broadband, veterans memorial, and the, the one. This time, I stand for any questions that Mayor Commission has.
Yes, sir.
I just want to be invited for that BA, Veterans Memorial.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bow.
Here, Mr. Wyatt. The Main Street project, the opening of commercial that you guys asked me to ask them about. They said, when I was at the next meeting, which was just a few days after our last, they said it would be five to six weeks. So we're looking mid to end of February when they get commercial. And as you know, the magistrate building's moving around a lot. They will be moving in furniture and stuff the end of this month through the 3rd of February. So I'll be looking for them to probably get ready to do the grand opening pretty soon. I'm standing by any questions?
Questions?
I am about 50% done on the design for the Phase 2 of the Jonathan project. That was our map for it last year. We are about 75% done on the design for the Melo Mill projects that will be new throughout town. And as soon as the weather warms up, we'll be doing those 5% projects.
Kevin and Kay. Is that the one that the county's in here?
Yes, it is.
One of them, okay.
It will probably be in a few months when, because you know, paving's really not real good to happen right now in this weather. But I haven't got an official date for them, when they're gonna start, but I know they did not plan on doing anything until commercial opened. Correct. Because they don't want, because they will, you know, they'll watch traffic. Because right now, Kay's the main feature route.
Right. Thank you. I'm sure you have continued to urge them on opening commercials.
Yes, I have. And they.
Oh, I know.
They're gonna get to it as soon as.
Oh, I know. And the, the Commissioner Wyatt said, well, as soon as we open commercial, we're gonna close Main and D.
Well, we're gonna open commercials a little bit before we close Main.
Not much.
There'll be a little gap in between, so, no.
Do you think, brother? Better.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I don't have anything new, other than some comments on two of the agenda items. So I'll waste all that time. Can you stand for any questions?
Let's see none. I have no meeting tonight, so this means we move forward. Bring this to our public comment time. We ask that you come forward to the podium, give your name, state what you would like to say at that point. Give three minutes and I'll open the podium up. Anyone has anything to say?
Hi.
Hi.
I came tonight to talk to you about the city park.
Okay, come ahead. Come ahead. Board of.
I'm a believer in Pollyanna. She looked the best in everybody. And recently, my little son.
Your, your name, please.
My name is Benny Roberts. Like Benny and the Jets, I've gone by BJ for many years. I know some of you. Some of you have gone gray-headed and some of you are losing hair. I'm going gray. But I went to the park on the 26th with my grandchildren and my grandson lost a pocket gun. And we didn't realize it till dusk. And so my husband and I went back the next day and I was focused on the ground, looking for a pocket gun. And what I kind of, with my focus on the ground, was trash, 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 trash. And I became very, very upset, very upset. And I didn't feel like it was the responsibility of any one person. I almost felt some guilt myself, to be quite honest with you, because I haven't been out there in a long, long time. My husband and I came here in 1977 to make enough money to leave here. We're still here. This town has embraced us. The churches. I think David's father signed me up as a Democrat many years ago. The public schools. I worked as a public school teacher. I got Elizabeth's son for a while. I think as a citizen of this community, we need to support our park better, our Shopperell Park. And because, you know, I'm a stranger in this environment right here. The last time I was here, my youngest son was 13, asking for a skate park. Okay? I'm just here asking for help for the park. I would like to be a part of the, of the park meeting, next time the parks and rent would meet. My understanding, it hasn't met for around two years. And um, I visited with Officer Massey out there that day, she has me on body camera having a fit. That's her front yard. That is her front yard. You wouldn't want any of what I saw that day in your front yard, none of you would. I don't have any solutions. I don't have any answers. I only have awareness and hands. I promised Jason that I would go pick up trash. I met with Jason that day, Officer Massey had Jason, I don't even know Jason's last name. Had him come out and they gradually calmed me down. I threw a fit for about an hour and a half, promise not to do that tonight. But we gotta do something to help him. The trash that's this far apart is not yesterday's trash. It's not last week's trash. It's trash from long term that is not getting picked up. So I went to the park on the sixth of January with a friend and we started right at the gateway and we started picking up trash. I found an earring, we found pennies, we found evidence of drug use. I mean, we found a lot of things out there that you don't want your kids picking up. Wasn't terrible, it's just unacceptable in my eyes. Went back a week later and guess what, I can see it here, but those guys have been out there working, you guys, I, I saw it. They have been out there working. My husband and I took a break, we took two fifty pound, fifty pound dog food sacks, empty sacks. And we raked the eastern edge of the west side of the island. And filled us two sacks with trash that shouldn't have been there, all white sacks deteriorating. How long does that take, y'all? We cleaned that part up, we went back this last Friday and we could tell they'd been around the inside of the park. The man is doing his job, perhaps he needs more help, perhaps he needs more funding. What can we do? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, yes, please.
So the comment I have is I'd like to congratulate, or for at least being a citizen that was proactive in it. Thank you for considering, caring enough to start something, even though it may only be you. But it must have affected someone else in our parks. And thank you for that, because your actions proved to be positive for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Ain't no one knocked up, we can move on. Alright. I inserted first item on our non-action items tonight. Uh, basically, I'm sure everybody here probably heard that the county is possibly uh, going to extend to all the municipalities in the county. Different pond amount, but uh, they are going to, if, if able and if they vote on it on February the fourth, I believe is their date. Uh, then we will get an additional five point five million dollars. And so I put this on here as we are entering into our financial workshop uh, next week. Then possibly we need to have, go with two different avenues. One, where we receive it and possibly come up with how we would like to uh, use that money. And then the other one is if they decide not to pursue that, which I don't believe at this point they would have gotten to this point. Or gotten the, the county to this point and then back off of it, but uh, we give them their diligence on this. Uh, but anyway, have two different avenues, with it and without it. In that, and I appreciate uh, our speakers are coming earlier because in that I would also like to possibly, in addition to the splash pad, in addition to staffing, as Commissioner Tejio, excuse me. Wages, increases of staff wages. Uh, all of these things, I think is going to be, come out in our workshop. And if we can use this funding to possibly relieve some of our long-term debt and uh, other items, uh, if, if we see. Then we can evaluate our revenue versus our expense situation and come up with a budget we can move with approaching into this next fiscal year. And hopefully, if we need to use some of that funding to move that along into business. So uh, I am really just kind of opening the, the floor uh, to commissioners to possibly throw out some ideas if they want to. We can also, we're gonna readdress this on the thirtieth meet. But my goal, and I know that this came from the county. I've been involved with this for the past couple of months, I knew it was, this was going to be a possibility. But they want to see the, the city, our city, um, to be able to get back to being able to provide services for our community or our city and also help our staff. Because they not been able to, we have not been able to keep up with the market as far as um, uh, wages and uh, various other things. I would like to see the pool on there, I would love to see uh, the parks. Uh, let's get those back up in uh, shape where we're proud to go out there and uh, not always apologetic in the form or in the state that they are in. But all of this is in there, I, the amount of money is not enough to get us where we need to be uh, long-term, but at least it's a good jumpstart and we would not have without them. I know they've talked about possibly doing this on a yearly basis, but I'm grateful for the first uh, injection. And if they can, great, but at least uh, we can use this to, to move us along. With that, I'll open the floor to the commissioner, staff, whoever, anybody that'd like to come in. Um, if anybody needed out there, also add, you know, this isn't a, it's an agenda item, but it's kind of a, a, a new for all of us. So if you, now would be the time, if you have a project you'd like to see added to it, then uh, just let us know. With that, I will stop.
Yes, sir.
I think also to uh, to point, uh, make a point, said, uh, they, they had mentioned it was part of our losses states, that HBC's bill. And that's why they're, that's money for, just because uh, they increased their revenue over a hundred million dollars. It may be to, to the, the formula, the state government coming down within our losses and they, they're giving our losses back. That's one thing. Second, second of all, if the proposal goes through and so forth. One thing I would definitely propose for us to do with, with the budget is to grab the amount of money that's required by the state for, to have our reserves and lock that up. You know, and, and what I'm saying is lock it up, just like put it in a whole separate account. Do a memorandum, memorandum or, or uh, or some sort of a uh, resolution stating that it takes the majority of the board to, to remove that funding from that account to be placed back in the, if something to have, something like that. I put something in place to where, if we, if we grab that, we put it aside, that unties other revenue. So relatively, we may still be, have the entire five point five, because right now, I believe we do have a reserve, right? Uh, there, uh, our reserves for the state of New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, state of Mexico, regards, uh, what they call restricted revenue. It's finance law that dictates a minimum of one twelve, which we do not have.
Okay, so see, that's one thing, and I, and I'd like to double up, it's one code, it's one, let's just, one million, let's make it two million, that will get, we have double research that's required and, and we lock it up, you know, in that way. It, one thing about it, it helps us when we pull out our bonds and so forth, because we have that revenue. It, it helps a lot of us. And because they don't look at, you have the reserves in place, you have this in place, when we go over bonds and so forth. It's gonna help us, quite a lot, I guess you'd say. So just, my proposal, I'd like to see. Makes a part.
So if I'm not mistaken, under, we're supposed to have like twenty-three percent, cause we had, when we start, and I'm trying to be, we had forty percent. And then we dropped down, dropped down, I think we're in the twenty-three percent now, or something like that. Cause what the document says, we're supposed to have, so if we just got back there would be great. But as far as, I heard there was uh, raises and I would not want to attach any raise to this money. No, yeah, that's just me. The one thing that we hear constantly on crap book and everything else is the water leak. So if you, you know, whatever debt that we can offload, if there was enough offload to pay that. But my main focus would want to be on bringing a contractor in, because our guys are apparently understaffed due to fiscal reasons. But if you have that extra money, bring that in, unload some of that off of those guys, so they can focus on other things that need to be tended to, that, that would be, I think that would be good. You know, whether it be water or sewer or whatever repairs. I, I would really focus on our infrastructure before we went outside for anything.
No, first and foremost, myself, I opposed spending any money before we even. So.
Right.
Uh, secondly, there's nothing wrong with getting ideas. Myself, I believe that we should put this on the, get ideas, but put it on our city manager. Let's see what direction he gives us. So we can see where he's looking at, because he's dealing with this on a daily basis. Know where we're at, know where we want to go. That's what we, I are important. So to me, it's my opinion is that we should put it on the city manager's shoulders. And see where he wants to go, we can give him direction on that. It's rounded.
Yourself?
Hey, no, closer we get to me, or who do I? No matter what you buy or implement.
Anyone else? Yes? We're moving on. We have a discussion of the waste management contract and services. Uh, I've had some discussion with our city attorney, and you want to discuss it and then we'll go, or do you want me to open it a little bit further?
It doesn't matter.
Go ahead and, and the, sure, we'll go in the black.
Sure, the two things that we talked about were, well, there's basically three things on there. The, the overage, and I think we discussed that a little bit, that's certainly just a policy issue. The CPI, that's already something that's incorporated into the contract. So whatever our position was on that, it's gonna happen because of the contractual language. And then I took a look, uh, a couple of times at the, at the meeting, uh, the last meeting, I think they discussed the the clarification about uh, four F. And, and if you take a look at four F, and that's where they wanted to add in, waste management wanted to add in some fuel surcharges. Now, you could, you could renegotiate all the terms of this contract if you want. And fuel surcharges could be part of that renegotiation. And so that, that's up to, to the commission, we could certainly discuss it. I think one thing that is clear is that you can't rely on part four F to add in fuel surcharges. There's gotta be some other considerations uh, to have that put in place. Four, four F is pretty specific. Um, it talks about uh, extraordinary adjustments and it gives uh, for the following causes. And it's got three categories, one is a change in applicable law that's effective after the effective date of this agreement, we don't have that. Or increases in surcharges, fees, assessments or taxes that are levy, not just in general, in the public, but levied by federal, state or local regulatory authorities or governmental entities, and we don't have that. Uh, change in the scope or method of operations by the contractor, don't have that, or new or additional services. So um, if you want to discuss a fuel surcharge, we can. I don't think it's something that was absolutely contemplated and clear under four F. And so we have to do that separate, but that, that's kind of my take on it. I think that uh, the considerations for the overages, especially considering how often you hear members of the public and playing about trash and waste management's position is generally, if you dump back your trash and you overfill, it's gonna blow down the street and then, you know, people get upset, we bring them back in. And so that seems like a pretty reasonable solution, but that, that was my take on the three things. I think on the CPI, it's a given, as long as that CPI matches up with what the percentage is. There's really not a whole lot of discussion on that, so it's just the other two items. The overage, and then um, if you do want to do a fuel surcharge, uh, we can certainly talk about it, but it is not tied to four F at all, so.
Any questions? We have this as an action item. When we get to that point, uh, my thought mirrored our council's advice on this is that obviously CPI, that's just a regular uh, adjustment that we deal with every year, so not a lot of discussion. And then I feel like uh, the people that are, that fall in this particular category that are overloading or overweight or whatever. Then they're the ones should pay for it, so I, I, they should have been a no-brainer to agree to allow that. And then as far as the fuel surcharge, uh, I believe that we would have to have discussions with them at a further date for a contract renegotiation on that, since it doesn't automatically fall under that. And we just do that at a later date, uh, and we could move on with the action item on that. Or we can just um, not take any action, so. That's just my feelings or my opinion on that particular matter. Well, they do state that they give you, I believe, two.
Two or three.
Two or three.
That'd be what you said on Christmas and the Wednesday, Thanksgiving. And then the summer and have a big party.
I think they, they did indicate it wouldn't be on the holidays, right? That was my favorite, so. That was one of the concerns I had is, you know, Christmas, are they gonna take advantage of that? But it seemed pretty clear they were not gonna count those holidays, but you have a big party in the summer. Why have to pay the price?
And one, one thing about the contract is when you do a contract, especially a five-year contract. You already put in place most, most likely adjustments to, to cost, cost increases with wages, field and so forth. So they put that all in part of the contract, so that's what's disturbing is that now they're coming back with another one after they did increase, what we did, we signed the last contract two years ago, was two years, four years ago. We signed the last contract, like that all came back, really, they rolled surprise, we went with it. And now they're coming back with us, uh, uh, like I said, they come back with that fuel charge and it's upsetting, it's one during COVID, yep, you dropped down two dollars fifty cents, but we didn't get no money back. But now they're asking, because it's, even if they, now they're wanting. So I do have a problem with that.
Any further discussion?
Just never a fan of fuel surcharge.
I hate fuel surcharge.
Yeah, it's, it's a portion of the bill, it's an average cost of every day, that piece of equipment. Whether it's five dollars or whatever, I mean, there's not a single one of us who drops an vehicle that gets good gas, charging for it. So you're feeling, uh, so it's, it's difficult, you've got to figure that in. You know, if you go up, figuring bill search is gonna be here, bill charge is gonna be this, based off of this fuel price. If it jumps way up, you just have to pull it, and when it goes way down, you know, they don't scream it, yeah, so. The balancing act, but just, on most of our stuff, we've never charged a fuel charge, because it fluctuates so much, so. Like I say, in a couple of years, it's gonna be a base class, and it typically always has been, so. So the county pays more fuel costs than anywhere I ever travel, and never understand it. And we make it right here, but I'll pay more for it right here, so. But it's, you know, I just struggle with that, and I do know they burn a ton of that fuel, but in retrospect, they're not you, we only get fuel purchased from them on the guy who left early, not the daily guy, because he's gonna fill up in the loves, he's gonna fill up in hobs. That's just gonna be smart on their driver department if he's paying attention, you know? It's the one guy that gets the truck that nobody cares, cares for, are we gonna get some fuel? So, you know, we don't get much out of it, so. Man, agree. Uh, Patrick, you stated when we talked, um, were you able to determine if, uh, the price of fuel is all in the CPI?
I don't think what they're asking for as far as that commercial increase is, is part of CPI, so I think they're looking at a different part of, you know, like it may be factored in as far as bread, milk, rent, those types of things. Um, but I think this would be something different, so I don't think we can say, hey, it's already factored in. I think we just take this position, and it's entirely up to you, that if we, you know, we're not gonna renegotiate it based on four F. It's not absolutely clear in four F that it was intended to include fuel surcharges. It's, it's whether you want to discuss it as an open item and renegotiate, because there may be some other terms in the contract you want to renegotiate also in addition to that fuel source, so it gives you that opportunity, but I don't think it's tied directly to that CPI like I maybe thought.
Any further discussion? Patrick. We're just turning it. The scene would like to come up to the podium, and we'll put this item on there, uh, and, uh, our police chief has already alluded to it. Uh, I happened to catch our code officer one morning after she had a little bit of discussion with a local business. And this pertains to, uh, it, it's an ongoing, and we've had this several times, basically truck traffic parking on our street in commercial zone, which we all know First Street, Love Street are included in our residential zones. Therefore, um, as our police chief has stated many times, they usually can do that. And we have no recourse. Now, in this particular instance, uh, it was on the corner of Avenue K and First Street. Uh, a gentleman has opened a trucking, it is a trucking company. He applied for a city license, he felt, and I'm, anything that I'm wrong, I'm paraphrasing uh, the meeting, in that he had a commercial business in a commercial zone, and therefore he was able to park his, uh, semi on the city easement, which would be from the curb to tend to be, yeah, yes. Um, and was doing so, in fact, he had two parked in front of one house, and effectively two parked in front of the other house. And he felt that he was in compliance, and then, uh, in reading this particular ordinance, he was, and so, uh, I felt like we should examine this ordinance. One, uh, there's, there was lots of discussions, he has to basically bounce over the curb to get onto that particular piece of his property. Uh, two, uh, it just kind of is in the loophole, uh, that there was no exclusion to, uh, the easement. And so I think we needed to look at this, and it, and he was very, he was upset, calmed down, um, after a discussion. And so would like to have us at least look at this and see, maybe we just need to change the language of this particular ordinance and get it more in line with what we're attempting to do on this, uh, and then we'll go from there. Any comments? I tried to paraphrase a lot of it, but you're welcome to.
No, you, you did a good paraphrase. My main concern with that particular, or those semis or parks, there's a stop sign just down the road from the school. If a little kid gets away from their parent, they are taking off, you cannot see around those stop signs at all. I am really worried that somebody's gonna get hurt, um, pretty badly at that stop sign. So unfortunately, it took the public, bashing code enforcement in the police department, and this gentleman all over Facebook, for him to move four of the semis, I had eight there at one time, because it is a commercial zone. I do not think that they should be allowed to park our city ordinance, or city easements, um, breaking the concrete, because then the city has to pay for that, to have that done. Um, I have enforced and been enforcing the semis in the residential zone. The problem I'm having now is they all have moved to commercial zones, down here on Love Street, North Love Street. This gentleman, where he's wanting to make a truck yard at his house now. I don't believe they should, I, we need to do something, either change the ordinance or rezone, because on the rezoning map, I have a commercial zoning going all the way from First Street all the way up to Adams on St. Tree. It zigzags on this side of town, and it is extremely hard to enforce it when I have a gentleman parking a block up from the residential, or from the commercial zone. In residential, I write him a three hundred dollar citation, he gets in trouble. The gentleman right behind him, right behind him, and the next half a block is allowed to park there because it is commercial. It's tearing up our side streets, I have had a lot of complaints from the citizens that why are we still allowing these guys to park there? They, the citizens believe they should be parked in their truck yards. We have numerous, like Stone Oil Field, I have Duke, uh, oil companies, I have a bunch of people up behind the hospital. They all have their own yards in, behind fenced in, you know, yards to park their vehicles. And I believe that's how it should be all throughout, I don't believe there should be any other semis parking anywhere on the side streets. It's making it hard, especially with the roadwork going on, you cannot see around.
So basically, we have residential areas that were never converted from commercial zones. Basically, and now it's parking commercial vehicles in an area that was never converted.
Right. So those businesses might be being run out of a house.
Right.
Would happen to be in a commercial zone.
So no, we, we do allow that. If you have, let's, you live in a residential zone this way, and you have your own business, you can have your office in a residential zone, but you cannot have your work trucks and your, all your other equipment there. You're only allowed to receive your mail and use it as an office. If you need to store semis, or your, your, um, wedge trucks and all that, you're supposed to have a yard in community, in, in the commercial zone to do that, but we do allow them as an office.
Right, but, but the reality is everything around that is, would be considered a residential area. It's like a certain residential home that's surrounded by, uh, it's not like Commercial Street where you have a house, a house, then a yard, and a house, a house, a yard. So how do we fix that?
We.
So do you, do you rezone that? I know, because I know here a while back on the east side of town, we had some people come in because they had problems with their insurance, because they were in a commercial zone, and we had deemed that commercial, but then they built residential in it, and this is a past problem from many years. So you would have, how much rezoning is going to have to redo?
We actually have, quite a bit, quite a bit.
Um, it is mostly residential in that area, um, there's not any open, like, flat out, this is a business, you can tell by pulling up to it. Um, I, I, I think we need to go with changing the ordinance of them parking in our easements and on our streets, because it tears it up. If they can park that truck up in their backyard, because it's a commercial zone, you know, most of them are not gonna want to do that. They're confined to trucking. Easements, our alleys are easements, so they're not supposed to park them there.
I thought you said they can pull it up in their backyard, but.
Well, they can jump it from the streets to their backyard, yeah.
Because rezoning would be difficult, um, just for the fact that when you do go to do that, you have to notify all those residents, and you're gonna have the ones that want to run these businesses out of their home come in and, and say, no, we, we don't want you to do that. And do you get into the events of taking it that way?
I wouldn't want to open up that can of worms, but maybe if you would can rezone if, if they come in, just like we rezone in other areas, certain uses were granted, so I think it may be unfair to say, A, we're, we're changing our position on this, so. I think the easiest way to get to it, and I say this a number of times over my career, is rather than maybe come up with new law, there may be existing ordinances that we're not enforcing, and so I don't think you're allowed to drive over the curb. That's not the most flashiest ticket, but maybe somebody could, but that may be a way to start dealing with some of those issues. Or if you, if you damage.
I have not found anything that says that you cannot, I mean, we can't legally tell somebody you cannot park in your grass at the other house.
Can I finish?
I, I think, I think there's some other ways to do it, at least to get started, so that we're not just, you know, dead in the war. So there are some restrictions we have about parking, um, and there are some ours, some restrictions we have about creating an unsafe environment, whether it's in that zone or residential, so. The other thing I'll look at, I vaguely remember sometime over the last twenty years, I love this, is that um, there were some, uh, real estate agents and a number of people that lived on Second Street that requested a rezoning in that area. I don't remember exactly where that was, and I think that rezoning was related to the ability to either refinance or sell your house, there was a finance issue. And so I thought we made some changes down there, but I'll go back and change it more, but in the meantime, we can start enforcing what we've got on the books as far as jumping the curb and creating other hazards, so. If, if you're in a commercial zone, that doesn't mean you can create hazards for other people on the street with stop signs and traffic and that kind of stuff. That may be a way to, and then, you know, rather than just issue those tickets, is maybe try to offer some kind of a solution about, hey, there's some other places where you could park, here's some other ideas, we may have some space to rent, right? And well, feel that for our industrial park, it could accommodate something like that, depending on how much, you know, time and effort we want to put in, so.
Just another question or quick, so based on how the law enforcement's gonna do? Because, you know, a lot of times there's always that itch, well, they didn't see him do it, so, you know, it was, well, how's that gonna work out?
I think if you look at, for example, there's one truck that parks on the south side of the, there's a house that's on the northwest corner of that intersection. And there's a truck that I've always seen parked in the lawn facing east. And the last time I looked at it, there's no way to get that truck up there unless it crosses over the curb. And so there should be some evidence on the curb, and, and we'll just have to, you know, if they think there's enough there for to issue a citation, issue the citation, let, let's see what happens, maybe we win, maybe we lose. Uh, maybe we put somebody down there at four in the morning, when they get ready to leave to go out to work, see what happens, too. Somebody's on duty at that time.
Sure, so, because if that's true, then there's like the Seventeenth Street, you got those guys there that we've got issues, so, yeah. It's, it's, it's all over town.
And I think one of the reasons is that historically, when you look at some of these areas that were zoned commercial, um, there just weren't that many people living in Lovington, and so that seemed to be the outskirts where we would put that of business as opposed to deeper in town where everybody was living or in parks, where, so I think it just, um, you know, something we've got to deal with.
And, and I agree with you on that too, Patrick, um, that's, I've been doing some digging, and I've turned into the mayor for ordinance that, um, it does state in here that, um, you were not supposed to park a grow, a, a vehicle with the GRC of more than fifteen thousand pounds or other vehicle determined the location, okay, so hazards, hazard hazards, or heavy hazards. In any street alley public, walk public way within the city which is not so a commercial district or an industrial district. That is where I have a problem, is the way and how our ordinances are recorded, I need to change that, so I can enforce this in the commercial zoning. That I, because it specifically states, as long as they are in commercial or industrial, I cannot do anything, my hands are tied. And that's why I would like to propose to maybe word this ordinance a little bit different, to where I can, when they're parked in the city easement, pulling up on the curbs and stuff like that, I can write them citations, and I do, when I write somebody a citation, I do let them know, hey, you cannot park here. You know, here's your citation, you cannot park here, this is where you're able to park. And usually it's the gas car or a company, and I tell them, you know, find, you have friends that have their truck lots, ask them if you can park in there. So I do try to help them find other parking, but we've got to try towards this different, so I can start working on the zone, on the commercial zone.
But if we change the ordinance, or the business owner's gonna be asked to be grandfathered in, because they've been allowed to do it this way all along, existing ones.
I think you have like a ninety, ninety-five percent residential area of that one.
I think, I think, um, we need to evaluate and recell, but keep it commercial, uh, and, and with restrictions. Because there's still potential growth on both sides of Main Street, both sides of Avenue D, and if we eliminate that commercial, uh, portion of it, then somebody could put a nice restaurant in there, that somebody's gonna complain about noise, and they'll say, well, this is now residential, and so forth. So I believe that with restrictions, if we can have a rezoning with restrictions, and restrictions will be heavy equipment, not all equipment, which would protect our streets and so forth, but I, I don't think we should remove commercial, because it's, it's pretty much a two blocks, sometimes one block radius on both sides of Main Street and Avenue D, and we need that commercial, because how even have commercial growing? But re, uh, re, reevaluate it and add restrictions, but keep it commercial. I don't, and it doesn't decide, it's industrial, the way I look at it, so you, you can have a house industrial, that's also a restriction. Uh, house cannot be placed in industrial, so there shouldn't be no residential in industrial. So if somebody has a heavy equipment in industrial, well, our, our ordinance states that you cannot even put a house in industrial. So if they're doing that, that's, that's, that's on them.
Yeah, so our industrial zone, the existing homes that were there were allowed to remain, so you may have some issues with residents right there. I've seen other cities that go in into a zoning overlay, which is like they don't actually change the zone, they just add restrictions to a certain zone in a certain area. So you can define that area where it's mainly residential and do an overlay of that would not be in allowed use for commercial, and that would not hinder a restaurant from coming in, or a, a flower shop, or anything like that. But, or even another home being built, but it would keep the trucks from being able to park on that location if that's how you, uh, wrote that overlay up as.
But would they still be grandfathered in, or?
You do not have to grandfather things in when you do that type of thing. Grandfathering is not really a legal term, um, you have to actually identify what you are wanting to allow. It's just like in our RV and mobile home park ordinance, we allowed those smaller, you know, you have to have forty thousand square feet, have an RV park. But in our ordinance, we stated that the, the, the ones that were built prior to this date, that weren't this size, as long as they met all the other requirements, they were allowed to stay. That's, that's how you have to determine what is that you're allowing to remake.
And I think that goes with the business licenses. Ordinance has changed, you get your business license renewed every year, you have to comply with all the new ordinances that have come from company.
Correct.
And that's, that's how you.
Business licenses may be renewed by code.
Yeah.
Every year.
Every year.
Over my sounds.
I can look in here.
Keith Miranda, I know you've been pretty quiet on this issue, uh, I know you have some thoughts, but do you have any you'd like to share that you?
I think what Ms. Crystal just mentioned is, you try to be fair to both sides, right? The gentleman on First and K, he thought he was doing everything the right way, he thought he was entirely within his right to run his business. He thought he was entirely within his right to run his business there. And it took some negotiation, but he ended up opening the trucks, but may not always go that easily. So, but something needs to be done. And I think the ordinances need to be clearer, so Ms. Kristina can better do her job.
Say a minute. In your spare time, can you come up with a person or group or whatever to look into this and possibly come up with some recommendations?
Yes. That also creates, if we have any MS run there and we can't get in because of all trucks, we have a fire, we can't get our trucks, we can't get hoses and bats. So you have to look at the safety aspect as well from that side.
I agree. It's not going to be a popular topic, but we've got to be looking forward to trying to better our services to not only businesses, but to our residents. Any further, anyone else? Thank you, Christine, we appreciate it. All right, move to our action items. Laura. Oh, we did move this, I'm sorry, you're right. All right, basically, we, we took out a closed section, which it was determined just, we need to come up with a evaluation form that we are going to read to. We added in to the package, the various ones that were. Make a decision tonight, but.
This is the one?
This is the only one that we were all legal with.
Oh, okay. This is not the one we ever used?
Yeah, I mean, me and Shannon looked and our girl off, so we have to continue as well.
I think we used three near James's time.
She wants to just create this.
My request for the commissioners, please look at that. If you have comments, let's, yes, sir.
Let me go through my old emails. I still got a few. And I think I probably have a couple of these somewhere. So let me, let me get those to Jaylene and then she can get those to everybody. Give me about three, four days, five days. We're a week.
Because I know it was a discussion before James left, but all those that were provided according to the packet, she's the commissioner, I looked where I could and like I said, Patrick looked as well. That's the worst one.
Yeah.
Okay. If you can just, thank you for, for that, if you can get us a little bit more.
Well, I know, I know we looked at at least three. All didn't like the first one we did, then we tried another one and then more, I think. So I think there was three that I mentioned. Yeah, let me go back, take a little off, go through that. Wow.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, good call, thank you, Commissioner Paul. All right, let's bring this to, all right. We're open for a motion.
I'd like to make motion for resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero nine, all other variants on cannabis and C for two oh seven, more.
Eric Fisher?
No, nobody here. Okay. We have a motion in a second on this.
Okay, so we have a request for a cannabis retailer to go in close to a cannabis production. The production company is on East Washington at one oh seven East Washington. And the retailer would like to go into, everybody knows it as the old paper party emporium building, which is two oh seven North Main. So the state does not have any regulations against density, from cannabis to cannabis. The only state requirement is from school. So the, they don't have to get a variance from the state for this. The only variance they need is from us as the city. The variance would also be temporary, basically, in fact, because if you don't put a temporary note on it, it would stay that way for the life of the property. And we only want it to be for, if it's approved, it would only be for the life of that. I mean, being there, it would not be transferable to another cannabis company or anything like that. Does there, the distance, did you guys read the paperwork on the distance there? It was a hundred and thirty foot is what it is from the variance requested area to where the existing cannabis facility is. Now, the retailer's facility, I know we have a lot of issues with the odor at cannabis production company there on Washington. They are doing everything required by state law to control that, but it's still, we get complaints on that regularly. The, the thing about retail is these items are prepackaged when they're onsite. There will not be that odor in this area or in this building because it's in a package, it's sealed. Sealed, the bag is never opened in the facility. It's strictly sealed when it's brought in the store and it's sealed when the citizen carries it out of the store. They, so they have their regular floor plan where the cell store would be, where they have their storage, restaurants, things like that. The thing we need to look at is the fact that a cannabis retail generates gross receipts for the city. Cannabis production does not generate grocery receipt tax for the city. That's another of your differences between these two different types of cannabis facilities.
So, so in our ordinance, Crystal?
Yes.
So, so we have a grower and we have a seller, basically.
Yes.
And then I think of a discussion we had, didn't you say the grower was thinking about opening his own selling one time or something?
Yeah, he has not applied for any of those processes.
So, so basically he's just a grower. In our ordinance, does it stipulate between, we just said?
We just said cannabis facilities and cannabis facilities.
I have a question. In this agreement, suppose it's passed, would the owner have the ability to add a production facility?
No, maybe it'd be for cannabis retail only.
So it spells out, so there may be a possibility of odor issues.
Correct. And, and we have learned more since that point when the cannabis production went in a year and a half ago, they've been there for a while. We did not have code in place. And we also did not know that the production site did not generate grocery receipt tax. Anywhere in the economic zone, your business must generate a grocery receipt tax. So we would not allow a future production to be in our economic zone because they don't generate a grocery receipt tax. Therefore, my city code would prevent that from happening.
What is all the extra space for? Do I have to solve the extra space for, that's not cell store or storage?
That, they did say that the extra space, they did plan on doing maybe a partial in the future, doing a consumption area, which is where they can buy like the animals.
But not smoking.
No.
Okay, that's good.
No, that's a different license completely where you smoke it.
Okay, this particular item, paying for planning and zoning. And Ms. Price, would you like to discuss?
I may price and share the, we did not give the variance to them because they didn't meet the criteria for our variance. It was not a hardship for the business, so that's not a criteria. There was no way for it to meet our variance requirements. Just because it's another shop, I didn't know what the shop was. It was, it didn't meet our requirements for what we set up in our ordinance for this. So we didn't give them the variance. And it had nothing to do with what kind of shop was going there. It was the fact that it had no bearing on where it was, it couldn't be there. And there was no hardship, so we had no choice.
So this was a map I had put in there because this was something we did not discuss, we did not have this at planning and zoning, the fact that the hardship complaint comes into compliance. When you look at all these blue areas, the pink areas, the red areas, those are all places that another cannabis facility cannot be within three hundred feet of. So we look at all that, it's pretty hard for a cannabis facility to be anywhere in our economic zone to generate grocery receipt tax.
It's pretty hard not to have a picket in the middle of town too. And I don't necessarily care how much they just. I'm not relating the two, I'm just saying. Well, I'm not against big production, big whatever production. Yeah, I have no problem with this particular industry. I just think that we have, we have our ordinances.
And it's against our.
Yeah, that's, that's what we were going, it's against our ordinance. And, yeah, if the other shop was there, wasn't there, the grower wasn't there, they wouldn't have to add one area. So it's, it's the fact that it's just too close and there's no agent written for it.
Does the other shop have here, are they planning on moving anytime soon?
No, they're not, they're staying. We have to sell ninety percent of their weed.
Not, it's whole pork, but weed. I mean, if I may, I have a question. Looking, I'm going for it, but of course I'm always out. What is the plans at this point, Drew, where are all these people going to park? Where are they going to park? They're going to walk there or they're DUI when they leave. There's no place to park down Main Street where her building's going to be at. There is no, not enough parking spots. To a point, but then you're also taking up the other storefront, the owner's store owners. You're taking up all their ass to park and their people to come and decide their stuff.
What about, you have to address the board. Thank you, Ms. Price. All right, so there's another young lady would like to.
This is the actual.
I understand, and she has her.
My name is Victoria Verus and I'm co-owner and I'm a registered nurse in Lee County. We've been in Lee County for, I mean, I've lived there my whole life and our business has been there for about seven years. We are the only vice licensed at Hogs. And we're the only ones that went before the commission at Hogs to be approved to produce and grow and manufacture cannabis there. So we're very knowledgeable in what we do. And if we don't move in here, someone else will, regardless of all the concerns that you guys have and references. So we would produce GRT. There is a cannabis establishment already there, like Ms. Law has mentioned. Is that zoning specific to produce GRT, the zoning of retail in the downtown area?
Our economic zone is, is, it's a requirement that you must have a GRT for the city to be a business located in our economic zone.
And so we have a business there that does not produce GRT. We are willing, we do work very closely with that business. Like I said, we sell ninety percent of their cannabis in our stores. So we are happy to produce the GRT in the area that you guys intended it for, in the zoning that you intended it for. We, our modest stores produced about twenty thousand dollars in GRT last month. So that kind of shows you, and the band, the building that we're looking at being, and I understand some areas are parking as well, but the band, the building that we're looking at going into has been abandoned for fifteen years. So I don't know what you're looking for, for your downtown, for it to be vacant, abandoned, or for people to bring employment and life into these areas. So I would ask that you guys, when you vote tonight, it's done without discrimination. You can see the hardship of getting a cannabis establishment for us. So since we do have, as we said, and you already have an establishment that isn't there for its intended purpose, we are designed to be there for our purpose and to produce the economical growth. And we'll do it at a very professional level. Like I said, I worked oncology and managed a cancer center for ten years before I did this. So we're capable. Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Waring, Commissioner, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Crystal?
Yes.
Now, how can we have a business in there that doesn't generate here?
Okay, so the production companies were allowed to get their license prior to retailing, which was prior to our ordinance being written on the cannabis information. And prior to me and Laura knowing enough about the cannabis, when they came in to get their license and we looked at their plan and their building, we looked at their building, they told us they would generate a grocery receipt tax. We were under the assumption that they would. When they come to renew their license this year, that is going to be an issue because they don't generate a grocery.
Well, that's the thing, I would think that the GRT tax ordinance was in there beforehand. Before they came in. That's, I see. Am I correct or am I not?
Yeah, I won't be able to. I won't be able to sign off that that business.
How come they were allowed to come into the first place?
Well, because in the first place, we did, we thought they would generate that grocery receipt tax. We were, they told us they would. And like I said, me and Laura did not know enough about cannabis industry to know if they were going to generate that monthly grocery receipt tax.
So how are they going to generate grocery?
That's what I'm saying, they're not going to be able to be in a production because they don't, because I've been studying the tax side of this. And that's where I won't be able to sign off for Shannon to give them a license. I won't be able to sign off on it.
And I think it all falls back to the state and the local government. There's nobody in there. I know nobody in there.
It was, it was a reference in a mess when they were.
It was thrown at the municipality, they said you figured it out. And so I think staff, it's no blame to staff or, or the board of commissions. It's mainly the fact that the state threw it on us and then it was a learning curve for the state and the municipalities and it's, and it's caused rear crap in the municipalities because there was no set ordinances or grounds when this all kicked off. Just looked at the dollar sign, they didn't look at the repercussions of all this industry coming into, to small communities and different, different areas within state. So, I mean, just, I just want to say, I know you did a good job, Crystal, and I know that it was a learning curve, because I assume, I assume as well, hey, you know? But now that I know, it makes me consider.
So Patrick, when this company comes in or renegotiates their contract or update their contract?
Well, we're going to have to take a look at, it's not a contract that you renegotiate. They're a. Yeah.
Right.
So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. And if our position is that at one time you represented that you were going to pay GRT, because that's something we rely on, you know, they opened up a dental practice, we rely that they comply with the rules and regulations that Mexico sets up about performing industry work or accounting or whatever that may be. So, so I think we have a fair opportunity to take a look at when they.
So, she wanted to read a little, do you have any idea?
They have to renew by March fifteenth, is all businesses.
Now, they can generate GRT. You can generate as a business input, I can pay GRT if they have a, a, they're, they can pay and charge that, I mean, they just up the price, my GRT is on my, is included. is included and.
I mean, I don't know how that's signed if it were being the business.
They can, I mean, we can't, they will have the ability to, to charge and pay G R T. It is a self-reporting system anyway. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not far from them, I'm not far from the one or not against either one of them. But I mean, to state that we're going to, if they prove that they pay G R T, then all of this discussion that we're talking about with them would become new because they would follow the ordinance and be.
No, I think normally it's a way a manufacturer works is it's wholesale price to the retail and the retail is on the taxes.
But he doesn't have to.
Yeah, he doesn't have to, but.
If I've got the best widget in the world and I decide I'm going to pay G R T to help my city or whatever, and you can either buy my widget or not, it doesn't. There's a lot to this, but we spent a good bit of time on this. Sir, you jumped up, I don't know if you had something.
I did.
If you'll be brief, if it's, are you related to?
I'm a director with Brian's daycare as well, yes.
I'm sorry?
I'm a director with Brian's daycare.
Which is our requestor.
Okay, all right, yes.
My name is Logan McElroy, I'm a director with Brian's daycare. And I just wanted a quick, quick observation that just because one company looked like they maybe slipped through the cracks just because ordinance wasn't in play yet, with that, that's going to keep us from, because of the distance, had they not been allowed to, they not slipped through the cracks, we would have had to file for this variance and would have been issued in this, on this location. So because once looked through the cracks, it doesn't seem fair for us to not be able to be granted this variance due to a loophole that they, that they got through. So I understand that, but that didn't allow us to refile or re, read.
If anything changes, you would be, you know, if the ordinance is in place and there are any changes, then you can absolutely. Quickly.
Okay, one thing that I think was brought up in the last meeting that is planning and zoning that wasn't taken into consideration and brought up tonight is they are right back from the school administration office, which they do do testing and all of that stuff with children in that building. And so in that regard, they're not supposed to be pre-interfered from the school either. It has to be a state register schools.
Well, it is the school administration office where they get tested.
The state would, the state would be the one that was denied that.
But so that's going to get denied that way. So it began with that.
The state has already given pre-approval.
Through the administration?
Yes.
Because M Q Ners told me today that they do do all the testing for the special education kids there. So that's.
If Slott Richard is a school facility.
Ours is not. You're out of the. All right, thank you. You know I can do it fast because I did it before. All right, so I was on planning zoning, I'm planning zoning Dave Rowser, Pastor Jackson Catholic Baptist Church. I'm, I'm not for cannabis, I understand your situation, trying to run a business. I'd like to propose a possible solution for all of this that might end up generating grocery seat tax for our community, though I don't approve of cannabis. We have, we have a cheese plant. What if we were to put a variance on our, or a stipulation in our code that allowed all the cannabis producers to be, or cannabis distributors to be able to be located in that facility, they can build out however they want. We sell them space because we're already maintaining that building. And we become the landlord, I shouldn't say we, that doesn't sound good. But the city becomes the landlord, they can charge rent, these places have a place to open a business because it's really difficult to find space in town to open a business, whether you're a cannabis shop or a dress shop or whatever, there's very limited space in town. But this would allow them to open that up, then you could put in a food truck or back there, you could generate grocery seat tax. All right, so, but I understand what I'm saying here. We, we can solve this problem and then we can give them a viable option. And, you know, you guys can have your little sampling stocks and everything else. You can have your, go beyond Costco, all right, but you can have it that way. But my, my point is this, they need a place, I see their problem. I'm sympathetic to the fact that they're business owners. But this might provide us a solution to be able to allow them to open up a business and generate some income for our community. Because there's no way we're going to be, as I was told, over and over and over, you can't stop it. But you can regulate. And in this way, we might be able to regulate it, control it, and be able to do it in a manageable way. And there would be adequate parking, there would be adequate space. You would have places, you'd have venues, you'd have people come in and perform music or whatever you want to do, if they can stay on stage and not fall off. But that's, I'm just saying, that this could be a viable solution for an albatross that's around our net, a white elephant, if you will, the cheese plant, because we try to find something to do with that for, since they quit stinking up the neighborhood over there. And plus, we, it solves our city water leak because, you know that leak that's out there, they can just put a dump pump in it and, and grow their product in the back, okay? I mean, we could solve, we could solve many problems with this situation. So I just throw that out as a viable option. Thank you. Hold it, hold it, hold it, okay. I appreciate it, but we're, I'm going to stop it right now.
You're going to stop it?
Yes, ma'am.
That's fine.
Okay, we, we spent a lot of time. And Commissioner, is there anything that any commissioner would like to say before, before we go to vote? I am going to say something, and this is, we have a planning and zoning board. They have rendered their decision. If we're not, if we're not going to listen to what their recommendation is, then why do we have a board other than the captain? So that is mine, is if we're going to start creating variances for everything, then, and we're going to do it at this table, then why are we even having it brought up in these? So that is my opinion of naked states where I, I feel on to do it.
I was a strong proponent for density when this first came across our desk.
All right, we have a motion and a second for consideration of this resolution. Any further discussion from the commission? Jen, vote please.
Commissioner Trivio?
No.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Bowles?
No.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
All right. For those.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023, that's 010, approval of largest thing.
Funding recommendations. Ms. Price, you're a busy lady tonight.
We had our, I'm just a member of the. We had our largest act being on the 16th of these. We offered two things from Main Street. We proposed $1,800 for the website at that, smoking on the plaza, since it is coming up pretty soon. And then they want recruiting posters and stuff, we gave them $450, so that's what they wanted. Subsidy. Any else?
What is the balance after, after expenditure?
What's our balance?
Come on.
Not more than 10. It was less than, what, we had.
I'm trying to remember the balance.
We do have balance. Yeah, we do, we didn't use as much as we had.
Okay.
We started more doors.
Correct.
Yeah, we had more left over than we said. Any else? Hand over the nap.
Is the Chamber, Main Street and E D C, is that automatically pulled out of that or?
Yes, it's automatically pulled out, first Chamber, Main Street and E D C. Chamber of Fireworks, we need to, we need to discuss at the legislature meeting. On, we need to increase the fireworks expenditure because fireworks, it's gone up and with their technology, it's going to cover it. At times. Yeah, those three things, Main Street, E D C and Chamber, they come out automatically before we get what we gave away. And is it, yeah?
Yes.
Any questions? Any break? Any discussion?
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Jen.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
All right, very good to our listeners. For those who.
I'd make a motion for resolution 2023, that's 011, approval of lease management contract. Oh, are we making any remarks right this minute? Do you want to talk for a second while we just?
Oh. You can make a motion however you want to. Thank you.
Make the motion, maybe how it is, with their contract raise, no fuel surcharge. Only full charge handed their description.
Okay.
You guys can just thank you.
Second. Yeah, motion second. All right, now, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes.
So basically, we're just, the motion made was the removal, except for the project as is minus the fuel surcharge and, and allowing them to, to charge part of the overloading overage. Oh, yes.
Yes, Commissioner, as a mayor, they also requested that survey. So in the resolution, there is that survey as well. It was just a request, just.
What is the survey until, because we talked about that earlier.
It was just the quality of service for them to hire a third party contract to do this, quality of service survey. And the city would have, they choose as well, yes. So. We need to have a lease contract. So there's three on the resolution, which is like, and that would be the fuel surcharge. I think it'd be cleaner to do it that way. Fuel overage and the quality of service.
Yep, exactly what I.
Okay.
Are we redoing this?
Are you going to hand your house?
Well, I didn't even know if you people want it or not.
How was that survey? Are they providing that, is the city providing that?
Yeah.
My understanding is that he said that they would hire us. That's what it says. We have input, we haven't put in, they choose.
Right. There's no, I'm relying on the city.
Right. Based on our discussion, I didn't see.
Your understanding is.
Why I'm not even, is that the city not pay?
Just trying to make sure.
Basically.
Denied.
The fuel surcharge should be good.
That by me? Your motion is still. Do we have to?
In our resolution, they do, that they do a curate of service. Second?
Good. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, um, amended motion. Jen and Jalen, do we feel like we have a general?
Your challenge is about.
Okay. Well, that's kind of where I was. Yeah.
Can you see if you read my mind?
Do the best you can.
Well, she just said that she wanted to manage the survey.
To allow them to take this survey. Okay.
Minus the surcharge.
Minus.
Minus the survey.
No.
That was on the first one.
On the first, I just wanted to make sure you had that in there, that's all.
So on the resolution, we'll put deny surcharge.
Okay. All right. I mean, this was. All right, any further discussion? Jen?
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023, that 012, approval of a memorandum of ground lease for Style Solar Project.
We have a motion and a second? Resolution, discussion?
Mayor, Commissioner, this is on the solar project that E D C started out in our water well field. The, it's just a memorandum from two, I don't know why I needed it, yeah.
Well, what happened is we first started out, the first ground lease was with Loud Cowal Renewables. And so I think what happened, we've got an assignment assumption agreement from Loud Cowal Renewables to Style Road and Highway E D C Solar LLC. And so in order for that company to operate and be able to say, hey, you got this contract, rather than take that contract around with them and show it to everybody, one of the things to do is to file a memorandum. The memorandum that they asked us about, that they provided us for signature had a little bit too many details in it, and I think it contradicted with what's in the contract. So what I put together is a memorandum, says basically two things, that Style Road and Highway is an assany of the contract from Loud Cowal. You know, Cowal assigned it on or about this date. I, I didn't find a recorded version of the assignment and assumption. I was, I would guess that they would record that at the clerk's office, the county clerk's office, or they should. But anyhow, it just says there was an assignment, we've got a new person that's in as tenant, and this memorandum says, yeah, we've got to deal with tenants, the ground lease that was entered to on a certain day, so that's pretty much it.
This company is the same, they actually, the same director signed both, both pages. So they just, what they did was they made a special unit within their own company, David and LLC. So it's not really changing who's doing it, besides just a group who's controlling the project within the company.
They have an end of life plan in there?
They do have in the original lease, they do have decommissioning portion in that original contract with them of how they're to go about it. All that would be removed when it's decommissioned, everything, every structure, all foundations, everything would be removed.
Okay.
I, I did check on that too, because that's something I don't want left when 25 years their contract's up and they leave.
Correct.
Okay.
We did have a meeting with them today to go over a few things. I looked through their environmental phase one report. I noted a few irregularities that I brought up to them, which they're going to get taken care of. Working with the water supervisor on, you know, making sure that they're not over any of our lines, they're not, and they're, so they're very, they were very adamant about they would watch that too and not any of our lines. So if we have any problems, we can always fix. They also have to watch out for all the different oil fields, there is oil lines, gas lines, there is oil wells out there, there's all kinds of items they have to go around to put this in anyway, so. to put this in anyway. So, um, we'll be very particular in this in the planning process on this.
Now, how does this? How does this look out from what we originally, the original contract as far as acreage and everything?
It's exactly the same, except that the, the party we entered into the original contract with Loud Callan assigned their rights, duties, and obligations to another entity. So it's the exact same contract. It's just a different entity. And, and the memorandum that's gonna be recorded that I prepared is a way to put the world on notice that there's a new person in the contract as opposed to the old person. Same contract.
Yeah, Patrick wrote up a different memorandum than the big huge one.
Yeah, I know. He was, uh, that's why I was.
Yeah, normally on memorandum, you just say, you know, rather than rehash the contract, otherwise you just record it. You just say, there's a contract that exists between these parties on such and such date. And here's the footprint, the, the legal description of where that contract is applied. So, you know, if the city turned around and we were gonna try to sell a piece of that property or lease it, um, the new owner or the new lessee would be charged with notice at the courthouse and say, well, there's an actual solar lease on this. And so that memorandum that gets recorded puts the world on notice that there's a, there's a lease agreement. And if you're gonna buy or sell that, or if the oil field was gonna do some work, they're charged with notice that this thing exists. We don't have to send out the exact copy of the contract or give it to everybody. But then they have to come in and, and take a look at what activities they've got. So to make sure it doesn't conflict.
Any other questions? I think when doing it this way, we also don't worry about changing of any of the lease agreement terms on the payments or anything like that. This way, you know, that way there's not, read this one, then read this one. It kind of cleans it up where it's still the original contract.
Further questions? Discussion? Five? Shannon?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for financial report. Motion in seconds for consideration of financial report. You, okay, I was looking to see, nobody was moving, so, okay.
Okay. So on the financial statement, we are in the black, so that's good. If everything's painted, sir. I did add the solid waste for the garbage. I'm gonna give you an idea of what we're making, which is a seven thousand. That's after we pay back the payment, the revenues that we bring in.
Yes, yes. And you know, one other question I have. And I know, all right, pick the, but on the solid waste. Previously, they had the total waste disposal site. Now we don't have it no more. Have you seen that decreasing cost or, or are we still seeing the same cost?
Um, I don't know. I have to probably go back and look.
Yeah, when we did, it was to ensure we had a cost decrease instead of increase to save, save revenue. I just want to see how that's balancing out. I think we've only been there six months or something.
I can go back to you.
And, and with, and with, uh, as we get set.
And then on the G, the G, um, it's locked in.
G R T?
G, yes. It's down a little bit, but it's still pretty good. It was eight hundred forty-one thousand.
You know, I think, I've been thinking about our, I think the G R Ts are mainly, I know we have to just construct, but the cost of goods have gone up drastically. So when the costs go up, you pay more in the taxes. And that's why I think our G R Ts are up, because I don't think people are really buying more. It's just what they're buying is cost more. So you're taxed more, more on the product that you're, that you're buying. And so that's where, that's where this is numbers coming from, because that's, why don't, why, you know, why is it increased by a couple hundred thousand?
Also, I've seen it shot blow.
Yeah, yeah.
To the mayor.
You know, I just, there's something to think about is that I think that the, the inflation has created this uh, G R T increase. But also, even though we have more revenue, it's costing us more to operate. So it may seem like, hey, we're gaining, but in reality, we're not, because it's costing us more to operate. So I don't want everybody to feel like, oh, man, we're doing good with two hundred extra, three hundred, when now a whole cost is double the price. You know, instead of one dollar, paying two dollars for a nut and bone now. So I think we need to take consideration, don't get happy and assume that this is uh, gonna be, you know, this is a blessing. Probably most likely when you do the math, uh, we're probably just making this much revenue out of the past. It's just inflation that's causing all this stuff.
It's eight hundred forty-one thousand for November, so we still.
Decent.
Decent, so hopefully it'll be.
Tracy, can you explain the mission of software budget?
Um, yes, we, Melissa and I had a demo with a guy and it's called Thirzo. And it's supposed to help with the budgeting. And they'll come and they'll put it all in for us and then when we go to do the budget, we'll just put that budget amount in and it'll operate, uh, create reports and things like that. It's supposed to make it a lot easier for us.
Is it similar to what the county uses?
Yes, it's what the county uses.
Can we go to this form? All right. Just want to make sure I understand what you're communicating in this particular. All right, your, your payroll expense, your payroll, and I'm assuming payroll expense is what you're calling expenses. Is that right? Okay, so that's your, your payroll and your payroll expenses are the first two items. Okay, your liabilities?
No, this.
Okay.
This is your expenses for the month in November.
All expenses? That was, that was, in other words, that was.
Gas, coffee, food.
Okay, well, that's substantially less than a lot of what they're paying, is the reason.
Yes, it is.
So your payroll includes payroll expense, is uh, FICA, everything?
Yes.
All right, your expenses were basically operating what we paid out and operating.
Yes.
Uh, your liabilities are your ongoing, um, payments for fire truck, the uh, there's all of our outstanding debts.
Yes.
Your monthly or whatever they are, quarterly, one of our quarterly, but that's what we paid out that month.
Yes.
Okay, your revenues, uh, your total revenue uh, was G R T plus uh, the utilities?
Yes, this is all revenue.
It's all revenue. What was our G R T in November?
No, I was saying in November, yes. Having to deal with the month we're in.
Oh, okay, I hear you. Good job. All right. Yeah. Yeah, one oh four. So that, then your revenue does not include?
G R T.
No. Well, that's my question. Does it include G R T or is it?
I don't think it, no.
No, it can't, because you got a million and forty-three thousand in G R T. And then I'm assuming that your revenue is from your utilities.
Yeah, it, it's not included in the G R T, this revenue.
Okay. So the G R T is not included in this form. Okay. That was where I was confused. The numbers weren't.
I can put it in next time if you want.
I think what, what the mayor may be looking at as well is, since we have not received our G R T check yet, your financial statement could be off, is what I'm saying, because how much revenue came in for the month of November? How much of our expenditure sold towards, and then what, so in reality?
Right.
Until we get that revenue and maybe shouldn't be able to report for October instead of November, because you already knew what you've received in G R Ts.
In G R Ts.
So right now, you don't know what you've received in G R Ts, and that would give us a better picture. How much are, how much income were you seeing for that month and how much is our expenditure overall were and what was the bottom?
Yeah.
So maybe this is gonna be tweaked on their name.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion or question?
Yes, we hope. We got a couple of questions on some of our expenses. You heard definitely, they're rebuilding the school press. Are they done with the school press?
As far as I understood, they're done with it, aren't they?
Yeah, I was after we go and then function now. Not, there are some electrical issues that are not, they are not related to the piece of equipment, but. I hate to say code, but it is, I'm saying it every word.
G is cooking house. We used to our north of which station, five nine thousand. Are they done with that project? Are they working on that project?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I'll find out to see if they're complete with that project.
Ready?
Say, no one, it's supposed to Mr. Ron Wood, see, we have some issues with contractors. We'll find out on that. That's that fifty-nine thousand.
Right. Yeah, I just like to know where we're at as far as, let's see, are more funds going towards it? How far we're done with that? We started, you know, we're hoping that. Uh, the, the paralytical documents system. What's that?
It's where we upload our public records into the website. So anytime you need to search a ordinance or minutes, they'll put it there and it's up on the site. So maybe that's a contract that we need to pay.
Okay.
Well, it used to be P D S.
I didn't hear that name before.
Yeah, they changed names.
Okay. Just curious. One for fifty-four thousand, one for Bana.
That was, we contracted with them to go in and actually scoop out all of the remaining. And then they also were part of reinstallation of new. I'm just curious. Any other questions? If not, uh, Shannon?
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, we adopted the agenda. However, Commissioner Trevio, the lights and Mr. Parks. We were happy you're here. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, thank you. Appreciate it, ma'am. Just happy to be here.
Okay, well, we're glad you're here.
I was thinking I did something I was.
If you're from here to Spain.
No.
But there we are.
Thank you.